So we're already into our meeting. We've just come out of executive session. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
Sure.
Move segment.
Now have a little call. Mr. Feldmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Jean?
Yes, Mrs. Dollar?
Yes, this is Bridger.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next on our list is recognition of the public and we have, well, someone who would like to talk. Amy Van Milligan.
Just hand up.
You have a couple of choices because we want the owl to pick you up. So there's this thing right here, or, well, actually, that's probably best because I don't think we can get you through here. All right, thank you.
All righty. I do have my own. Hi, I am Amy Van Milligan. I am a mom of three kids, one at the high school, two at the middle school. I'm a board certified pediatrician, I'm a board certified addiction specialist, and I'm a board certified internist. And I am here to implore the school board to please install Nalox boxes in all of our school buildings. One of the challenges that I have lived through and see every day is it's typically start using substances thirteen to seventeen years old. And one of the challenges right now is Fentanyl is out there, it is designed and pressed with the same pill presses that pharmaceutical companies use. A child may think they're taking it, you know, an Adderall for a test, I'm not saying it's a good idea, but that might be what they are thinking. They think they're taking a Xanax for a panic attack and the next thing you know, they are blue and not breathing. And seconds matter, seconds matter for your brain. And so I am arguing to please install the Nalox boxes, at least at every location where we already have an AED. So the Nalox boxes store Narcan, that is the nose spray, that is light saving, and the case of an opiate overdose. It is simple to use. My fifth grader, having watched me prepare presentations, could probably tell you guys how to do it. It's an easy to use medication, there are no needles. One of the things to realize is how effective it is. Bystander CPR, great wonderful thing, we should all know it, we should all teach it to our kids. The success rate, really not very good. The success rate for Narcan in case of an overdose is eighty to ninety percent. It costs forty-nine dollars retail, but you can get it free from the state. And one of the great things about the new House Bill fifty-seven is that you're allowed to take donations for Narcan. One of the things to know is there is no harm in case it is not in a drug overdose. So if somebody faints, they're stressed out about a test, they have a diabetic coma, they have a stroke, they have a heart attack, giving them Narcan is not going to cause them any harm. Please call nine-one-one, please get some, you know, medical attention, start CPR, but Narcan is not going to harm them, which is one of the reasons why I really think the best answer is not keeping it just in the nurse's station, but keeping it in a visible location where it is available when it is needed. And unfortunately, school systems who have adopted this, LA used it about thirty times in one school year. Prince George County, which is up kind of northern Virginia, Maryland, forty-five times in one school year. Now, some of those may have been a child thinking some other things, but we have AEDs and this is going to save far more lives. And there's nothing worse than seeing somebody blue and knowing, I can't get what I need for them. Do you think I went over by fifteen seconds?
No, but thank you. Could I ask a quick question? Does it have a date? An expiration date?
Thank you. Yes, so it does have an expiration date. Typically, the one, the supply I just got from the state is good for another eighteen months, two years. So it is not, it is not a super short expiration date.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next on our list, we do have a presentation tonight on the Elm facility, Elm primary facility design presentation. Turn the light off so you can.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. It was exciting to be with you earlier today. Groundbreaking, that was super exciting. Mike Richly with Richly Architects. I'm here to do a board update. My agenda for tonight is to give you an update on the Elm schematic design. Remember, last time we were together, we looked at the Hilltop schematic design, so now this is Elm's turn. And then, since I'm not here super often, I thought I would give you a quick update on the Vermont Neighborhood Workshop number one and our thoughts on our response to what we heard that night. And then I'll brief you on the schedule and then take the, any of your questions that you might have for me tonight. We are working our way through our public engagement process. Hilltop has worked its way through three neighborhood workshops. Elm has worked its way through two, and we have the next one scheduled for December eighth. And then it kind of skips out of order. The Neighborhood Workshop number seven for Vermont has already occurred. And then eight and nine will occur in Q1, Q2, twenty twenty-six. But tonight, it's kind of a timely update because Elm had some strong public input at Neighborhood Workshop two, and there was some concern at Neighborhood Workshop two about, from the public, which was like, you're telling us you're gonna, we're gonna see this for the final time, December eighth, you know, what if we're still can, still have concerns? So there's been a lot of development on Elm, and I just want to brief the board to make sure you're comfortable with the direction of what they're seeing prior to us releasing our proposal for the final on December eighth. All right, so just to set this up, add a little editorial comments, this has been, these projects are kind of like fox hunts. Where you start out and you hop on your horse and you know at the end of the day, you're going to catch the fox, but you're not exactly sure where the fox is going to go. So, for example, at Hilltop, you remember in our, our pre-bond image, this is a project whose site plan and floor plan have changed dramatically since the pre-bond. However, the exterior design hasn't changed dramatically, it's been pretty consistent. Elm, a little setup for Elm, by contrast, its site plan and floor plan are pretty much the same as the pre-bond, but the exterior design is taking, taking a shift. So each of these projects have taken a life of their own on. And it's just been part of this, this journey to figure out, you know, what the story is for each of the building and trying to, to be responsive for that. So it's taking a look at Elm, these are the existing conditions, the aerial. I'll remind us all that Elm is in the historic district. It's the only of the three projects that are in the historic district. It is a, what they call a non-contributing element of the historic district. If you look at the historic district map, there's a little box and it says non-contributing. So one of the questions we've had all along is what does it mean to design a new Elm that's currently non-contributing to the historic district? And it's been a journey to get to that answer, and, and what we've kind of learned along the way is, as we've shown the community and the Architectural Review Board and the Historic Preservation Committee, the direction they've been able to provide feedback and, and steer us along the way. This is the view of Elm. One of the things you'll notice is, is actually how high the building sits on the site. And in the first community workshop, people were asking questions about that and said, could you take a look at this problem? And when you walk around the perimeter of the site, you're walking up to Elm, but then when you walk around the perimeter, it's falling off in all directions. So Elm is essentially sitting up on an elevated plateau. So probably the most significant move we're proposing for the site is to take four feet out of the height. And what that's going to allow is on the, on the south entrance, more of an accessible route up to the building. So not going up plus eight, but going up plus four feet. And it's also going to reduce the height of the second access. I mean, that's going to be a terrific improvement to Elm. Here's our proposal for the site plan, and when you compare this to the pre-bond sketch, it's pretty much identical in that the building shown in white is essentially going to take the, the size of the first floor plan of what you have today, but remember, we're stacking this two stories as the square footage grows. We're going to maintain a one-way drive in and out. Expanded playground up to the northeast. As we drop the elevation of the site, we're also going to improve one of the significant drawbacks of what you have today, which is the playground that's depressed, several feet down, and you have a whole ramp structure to get to it. So here's our combination hard surface, soft surface playground, hard surface area, swing set, synthetic turf play structures. Our landscape team is envisioning a natural playscape in the back, and then some additional soft surface play area and equipment up front. Service will be contained up to the front, with separation with a fence and gates to the play area. So we'll be able to come in, have service to the kitchen and the central plant, and have some parking. And then service can come in and come out and leave without interrupting the, the safe zone of the play space. Now, this parking wraps in this direction, and we are plus, I think, several parking spots more than you have today, which is a goal. We're keeping three spots there off to the left. Bike racks, lag pole, and then the circulation route in the morning will be the sidewalk crossing in and then up and in. And actually, the way this works is cars are not allowed to use the one-way drop-off, try and drop off and pickups. This will be cone'd off, and students can really walk all the way up the front on either direction. Any questions on the site plan?
So then, sorry, if cars, if they're bringing children, they would stop on the street and the children would have a car and just.
They would, yeah. And the, the drive would be open for non-people arrival dismissal. So once students are in the building, if a parent needs to pop in and drop or visitor parking, they can use the, the one-way drive.
Where is the handicap?
It is right here with this symbol.
And I will say too, Mike, I can't remember the board had seen all this, but at least in the core meetings, you had looked at, I mean, I know we came back to where this placement is, but I feel like you looked at at least like eight different placements of like, let's turn it this way, let's shift it this way. Maybe the playground can be here. So, I mean, it was very thorough of how you could maximize space. And then, like the fire department and police chief had to come. So just with all of that, it landed back there, but not because you didn't explore.
Yes.
A lot of options, maybe how it could fit in that time space.
Yep. And that also generally played well with the historic district, which is not trying to dramatically change the character of the site and its usage.
Now, when you take a hill out, which I guess makes it more in a level of Victorian on one side, but certainly lower than the, the house on the other side, on the south side, what kind of drainage do you have to worry about?
I think we're still higher than both.
Okay. And some of the neighbors were there, honestly, too, to ask.
We're still higher, we're just not as high.
Is it worth it, maybe, if you're thinking the, the, it's not as high, it's not roll, you know, not as much as running off?
A lot of the neighbors' complaints were drainage.
Well, that drainage goes, yeah, those houses on, oh, no. Those, those do, do, been in your backyard and it was wet, yes.
And that's exacerbated, the greater the slope. So as the slope comes down, we should be able to reduce the quantity of, of the runoff.
I just feel like the house to the south, it does sit up higher. And then certainly, as you go down that street, those, there's some really tall driveways, so I just wondered if.
I guess the ground that it's on may not be higher, but the house being so high sort of looks.
And where's the water going to go?
And also remember, this will be two stories versus one story now. So it'll.
Some of the drainage, that's like.
Okay.
Mike, the front entrance, is there a portion of that that's covered?
Yes. Yes, there is. There, you'll see in, in the 3D view, there is a porch that's out here now. It's slightly different than what's on this drawing, but there will be a covered porch, so. So far, that's a similarity between both projects, is have a covered entry. Yeah, that's great.
What about the entry for kindergarten? Is there going to be a special one for that?
And, and that's due to the building size being so much smaller and the entry at the front being the only entry in the building.
And I can't remember if we talked about this the last time with you all, but. We, I don't know, did we talk about the pollinator garden the last time, that that would be a feature versus, you know, Vermont and Hilltop have kind of that bigger vegetable garden and all of that going on. But in trying to maximize this playground area and have swings and all that, and also to catch the right light, as we began talking about it, we, you know, the group was sort of realizing that we, I don't know if that works as well at Elm as it does at Vermont and Hilltop. So they came up with the idea of having like maybe more of a pollinator garden instead of what you might see at Vermont. And it's, if you notice, it's kind of on the south, it'll get that south sun and, I guess, west, but it's in a good location, and I think I like that.
Other comments we heard from the community were around mechanical equipment. In the previous community forum, we had a mechanical yard out in this location. You may recall from like the Hilltop plan, you had the, the chillers in a mechanical yard. And with the direction we hear from the community, what we're proposing is to put the chiller on top of the roof, make the mechanical yard go away, take our electrical transformer, instead of doing pad ground mounted, we're going to put the electrical transformer on a pole. So that'll just free up additional space. This is your smallest of all your sites.
You have to put a wall around the chiller somewhere to what you had to do in the.
We'll do a mechanical screen wall around that, yeah.
So is that outdoor learning thing still there?
It is not.
Okay, I, I thought.
Yeah, this is a little bit outdated, so. Okay, shall we move on? All right, so next, let's dive into the floor plans. And I'll, I'll start with a quick pass and then we'll go back through and zoom in a little bit more detail. So entry is at the left with the red star, the yellow, circulation through the building. I can see the admin area in purple, mechanical and kitchen in gray, and then music. And as we work down here, we have our sensory room and our cross categorical room, two kindergarten rooms, first grade, restroom, peat storage, and then the second first grade. And then we go up to the second floor and we pop up the stair and we have our library facing Elm Avenue. Additional special ed space, small group space, a pair of twos, a pair of threes, a pair of fours, and then art on the northeast corner. Extended learning area and small group. And I'm going to just zoom in, just kind of talk through this in a bit more detail. So you'll come through the secure vestibule. These doors will be locked and you can be buzzed into the admin area. This is where secretary and reception will go. We have conference, system principal, guidance and principal. Health clinic, the ADA restroom for the health clinic, the vault, record storage, two itinerary offices, admin storage, we have our lapation room, our admin restroom, instructional material storage, and this is our teacher workroom, male coffee room. Up across the way, we have our stair that comes up. Underneath the stair, there'll be doors that'll lead through the custodial workroom out to loading, receiving document to the outside. So this will be a custodial office, mechanical space, and then a restroom for service. Kitchen. We turn around the corner, we have our instrument storage for music off of the hallway. We have our, our large music room, music storage room. That music room will have direct access through this door, up the ramp or stairs onto the stage. We have a, a small corridor here into our sensory room. We have a calming room off the cross categorical room with one-way glass in, and then we have our ADA restroom shower. We have a kindergarten room, which has its own restroom, as well as another kindergarten room with its own restroom. And then we've added a calming room down to this corner. First grade classroom. One of the design differences here from Hilltop is that the, this will be a combination gym and student dining room. And what's going to make it different is on our stage, we're going to do a, an acoustical wall, a folding acoustical wall. What that will allow us to do is to use the stage more flexibly in the future for other uses. So what we did to support that was add a door and a stair off the back hallway. So in the event you want to use this as another space for instruction, you have the ability to close the acoustical dividing wall and then access it from your academic course spaces. That's a little twist from, from Hilltop. And again, this is all the team, this is layers and layers of team effort. We're seeing, we're seeing some different things in this building, right, with that dual-use gym, student dining room, so this is a great team effort. And then also, everything we're learning at Hilltop, we're applying to Elm, and everything we're going to learn at Elm, we're going to apply it to Vermont. Aftercare storage, table storage, boys and girls, large group restroom, as well as a, we're calling it a family restroom here. And then doors from the gym out to a peat storage and our other first grade classroom. And then this corridor will, will head you out to the back stair, I'm sorry, to the back doors to, directly to the playground. So the flow will be student dining, out the doors, have access to the restroom, and then out directly to the playground.
Is that wall between the corridor and the gym, student dining, is that, is that a wall or is it?
This is a wall.
Glass, open?
This is a wall, yeah. And that's because, for example, in gym usage, this rear wall is going to be lined with padding, wall padding, so it doesn't really lend itself to that kind of transparency.
Okay.
Nor would you want necessarily glass and windows directly behind your basketball hoop and, because there's only three feet between the court head, the end court line and the wall. Here for our kitchen, our kitchen access door will be directly here to that front side for service and drop-off. We have our dishwashing room, a locker room, our restroom for kitchen staff, dry storage, and then the kitchen space. So the students will flow into this door and they'll be served, and then they'll come out this door into a, a student dining room setup. We'll have the table storage room, so we can pull the tables up, move them into table storage, deploy the chairs out into the student dining room and have that auditorium type of a setup. And then heading upstairs, so if you were to come up the stairs from the lobby, we've created a two-story space with some wall space. We'll have the environmental graphics overlay coming for this project, too. We provide the wall space to do that. This is the elevator coming up on the first floor. We have some, two special ed spaces, about two-hundred-and-sixty, two-hundred-and-ninety-six foot feet. Library space with windows overlooking Elm with our maker space. We did add a wall here, consistent with how we modified the Hilltop library. But we've got some windows for some transparency between the corridor and the library. Workroom storage for the library here is across the hall. We have a gifted intervention, two small groups, two fourth grade classrooms. This is your tech room, we call the main control and equipment room, as well as a staff restroom. That'll be up here on the second floor. We have two third grade rooms, two fourth grade rooms, and open extended learning area with a small group room off of it. This white area represents just open to below, so these are two-story elements from below, and we're going to work in some windows to look down into the gym. Staff restroom, boys and girls, and individual restroom for students on the second floor and custodial office. And then an art realm, art storage, building to add a count. And then we've got the stair down. So I will take, stop here and ask you if you have any floor plan, specific questions or thoughts or input? There'll be a later point when you give us perspective on all of the various kind of dynamics regarding the outside. Yes, coming up next, yeah.
What are, what are the lines on the state?
Those are curtains. They just show up. Are you talking about these?
Yes.
Those will be curtains. It just shows up as a really fuzzy block for mechanics work. So if there's a production happening, those could be closed so that you have. There'll be, yeah.
Travelers or full curtains?
There are full curtains around the front and around the back, and I forget what these are called, mid-stage or side-stage balance curtains to, to.
Because they just.
Lock the view.
Yeah.
I will, as you're thinking about your questions, I'll, we've got a basketball court, we do have steps down from the stage to the basketball court. We're going to provide three feet clear between side of court and the court and walls, and we have the two rows of bleachers proposed. And then in terms of baskets, we have the main basket at both ends and then two cross courts. And then we have a over-stripped volleyball here as well. Any floor plan questions, no?
I've got some questions. You mentioned that this includes some of the items you've learned from the Hilltop experience. Can you give some examples of what we're seeing here that you learned from Hilltop?
Sure, one from this week. With input from, from Jeff, who's not in the room. The calming room, which apparently is a greater and greater need for your students, really feels like it needs to be embedded into that kindergarten first, first grade area. The calming room was here, right? So that felt too distant from, from the kindergarten first grade room to kind of quickly pick a student and put them in the appropriate space for that situation. So we've added a calming room here in between the two kindergarten rooms. And then we said, wait a minute, shouldn't we be doing this at Hilltop, too? Right? So then we're going back to Hilltop. Sometimes it's Elm, it's seeing Elm that makes us go back to Hilltop and add something. So that's an example where just this week, we're, we've gone back to Hilltop and found a way to carve an additional calming room into Hilltop based on what we've learned from Elm.
So you mentioned the number of times sized and just the challenges of getting it all in or just whatever. What was the biggest issue you were trying to resolve, the biggest challenges to get all the spaces and manage it?
I'd say the biggest one was the mechanical. Not, we, we, there will be additional pressure on us from our consulting team to provide more mechanical space. They'll take whatever you give them, and, and we're trying to keep that as contained as possible because the further this wall bumps out, you back to the site plan. Maybe it was concerned about visual access and being able to see the playground. Mechanical engineers would, would say that wall should be way out here. So we're kind of pushing that back. So we're, we're challenging them to make their mechanical room as efficient as possible. What's interesting is if you compare this to the pre-bond schematic, there's a shift in the music room, being directly accessible from the stage, we flipped the gym on the stage. We did that, we flipped it so we could get natural light into the student dining room. So there's some betterments we did, but I would say this layout, we envisioned the library up front. Art on the second, the layout's pretty, has been pretty simple. Ready to go to 3D? Ready to go to 3D? Okay. So we started out uh with Elm and a, I would say a slightly toned down, modern version of Hilltop. So we kind of took Hilltop, we refined it, made it slightly more simple, and we presented that. Um, and we presented it first to the historic preservation committee and to the architectural review board. And they did not like it. Uh, it was words like too industrial, too modern, not fitting. Uh, that was from the historic preservation committee and uh, the architectural review board felt similarly. We went to the community and had neighborhood workshop too and presented. A slightly more traditional version of that. That night, we were kind of redesigning in real time. And uh, the community expressed that it still wasn't traditional enough. They were mostly uncomfortable with the um, uh, the curtain wall feature at the entry. It felt like too much glass. The overhanging features felt too modern. Uh, the cantilever drop off canopy similar to what we're doing at Hilltop also felt too modern. They performed more of a porch-type structure that made it feel more like the neighborhood. There's some debate around brick color. Uh, and I would say that that felt like about eighty percent of the room that night, but it was a strong eighty percent. There were some voices advocating for. Uh, more of a modern aesthetic, but I would say that was the minority. So the core team received that, wrestled on it, and we decided to pursue a more traditional path. Uh, and then as we picked precedent for that, the project that kept coming up was the, the middle school. So making, middle school's also in that historic district, making it, tying it back. In other words, we're, if we're picking, the existing building is not a story. So if we're, we're needing to pick some precedent, the middle school felt the most appropriate precedent uh to pick in terms of. So what we did is we redesigned uh the exterior. Of the entry, we uh created more of a symmetrical centerline entry for this door. And then as you can see in this drawing, we have columns and a porch engaged into the front of the building. As you'll see in a second, it's much more reminiscent of the middle school.
So twenties instead of fifties.
Yes.
It looks like the nineteen twenties instead of the nineteen fifty. There now, that's middle school.
That'd be permanent visions, right? Yellow as well. Yes, the red, the limestone, limestone base, yeah, very traditional, double limestone columns. Uh, if you remember, those of you who remembered seeing this in me and workshop too, it's really unrecognizable from that. Um, deleting all the curtain wall, having the punched windows. Uh, limestone cornice detail popping the entry up. Uh, creating a new limestone band that wraps around the top. And then putting some medallions. And as you can see in this porch, the porch is now engaged, provides cover. It's a little bit deeper.
So we put things on the limestone like in the middle school, health, reading, mayor.
As you wish.
You can do anything in really the paper.
Yeah. So all kinds of things are written, it's very consistent.
I think the, uh, the community is gonna be happy with the um, there was no mechanical yard here anymore. The chiller's been relocated to the roof, which was the home of our previous outdoor learning space. So in a previous version, if, if any remember seeing it, we had this flying roof. Over this covered outdoor reading porch that has been eliminated in this option.
There's a question from the impact session that we had.
Yeah.
I mentioned eighty percent of those in attendance had a certain pretty strong, was that, I wasn't there either, was that twenty people or two hundred people?
Uh, that was um, I'd say in the room that night, non-school people, you're probably talking twenty.
But there was more than that.
So more than that?
Yeah, with school people, we were about forty-eight. So I tend to, wasn't.
It was a school, you mean people before by the school?
Or, or, or the, yeah.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, so. I think there was probably, I, I would probably say somewhere like thirty-five. I mean, it's not.
The total.
No, thirty-five non-school.
Right, right, but I'm saying thirty-five of the people who were stating very strongly that they did not like the direction it was going and wanted to be more traditional. Or of the thirty-five, eighty percent of those people.
That.
Got it. So we're talking twenty-five people of that.
We're pretty strong opinions about the direction and the consensus in the back of this second.
Yeah.
The architectural, the historic preservation committee, the architectural review board. Uh, I think there was an individual on the architectural review board in particular who addressed the board directly. Uh, and then should the folks like me, so there was a, a gathering consensus that we needed to make a change. And, and we have since um floated this past uh the architectural review board. When we did our Hilltop presentation. And they all liked the change in direction.
How would they not? I mean, it's like, it's like this is the middle school.
Yeah, one, we need their approval.
Absolutely. I was just trying to understand, and I, I'm not arguing, I'm not pushing back, because honestly. It's the people's choice. Um, um, I just quite try to understand. So there's a certain look. And then there's just how, how you navigate the, the line, you know, because there's.
Yes.
There's certain things you can keep inside or others, sometimes something you can't to get more traditional and structurally and all the other things. So I realize you have managed that. I trust that you've managed that finally and as best we can. Uh, I'm just trying to get a sense for magnitude on the, the, I guess the vote. You're pointing on the. Architectural review board is a helpful clarity on external perspective that was required. I was wondering if there was a version of this that wasn't as traditional as this, that the architectural review board could have also been finally. But then you might not be able to do parts of.
There was a, there, there was, the architectural review board has seen three versions. There was an in-between version that they also saw that, that didn't, it still retained the curtain wall. And they really were advocating to get rid of that whole curtain wall. But by the curtain wall, uh, this was all glass. And they really liked creating walls and punched openings and eliminating that curtain wall feature.
And I, if I'm not mistaken, they also looked at Hilltop but liked Hilltop for their, that surroundings. Am I right about that or?
Yeah, they're.
Are you meaning the architectural review board?
Yeah.
Well, so this is all like, happening all simultaneously and, and I. If I were to categorize or kind of put into words, what's happening is. This one is, is leaning way more traditional, which feels fitting for that neighborhood. Which almost gave Hilltop the space to be more modern and expressive, because it's mostly surrounded by woods. So I, I think that this one leaning more traditional allowed Hilltop to lean more modern. And then what's gonna happen if Vermont?
Not much.
I don't know.
We know it was interesting because in the community discussion, I don't know, I kind of got this feeling that they were like. Well, what do you all think? What do the teachers think? They, they have. I, I don't know, it was a different focus.
Yeah, I mean, they did have a lot of like. Teachers and students less so far on.
And safety.
On external.
And lots of discussion. Um, and Elm, I guess I understand, this is our smallest footprint, uh, you know, and it's really. I mean, Vermont butts up to houses too, but um. I, I guess their association too. It, it makes sense with me. The tie to the middle school, given that it's in the village, but.
But I'll, I'll, I'll keep going here. So we have a window in our custodian's office. Uh, and then the setback, this is the door to the kitchen. We have our, uh, we increased the size of the windows uh into the student dining room here. And then we had, in the previous version, we had a curtain wall all the way down. And we went back to the punch windows and created more of the, the traditional porch. Back here again for a cover off the playground. So this, this is uh where we are today. Um. Of course, we want to hear your thoughts. Uh, this is where it feels like things are heading. As we're going to December eighth, we will present this, I mean, this final version of Elm.
Can I see the front again?
Yes.
Especially that porch and portico or whatever we call it. So those window, are those windows there that will look into the mechanical room or is that all brick, bounce brick?
Uh, this small brick here. And then on the side, um, we're envisioning these as they're called vandal glass. So they're, they're fake windows that you can't see through, because on the other side of that will be a mechanical room wall that'll have all kinds of. Equipment against it. However, this third one will be a window into the custodial office. But there was some uh expressed concern about trying to soften the mechanical visual from the street. And by not having this as a solid brick wall, but adding some treatment and some glows that felt like it softened that edge.
It also helps you look at it from the side, on that playground side, it's sort of like, there's some window looking stuff that's spaced uh around it versus just this huge wall.
And then you're coming up uh on environmental graphics. Um, Kelly's just about ready to get started now that this is settling down. But uh, there will be natural light into. Uh, two-story high walls. So there, and then even this will be windows on the side. So we're envisioning the uh environmental graphics. To occur in that lobby.
And we decided in core, like originally, to try to have the freebie cousins, if you remember, to look a little bit more similar with some uniqueness. So that was, if that was a choice for Elm, that they're, they're gonna have different architecture rules. Vermont did a great job at.
Distance cousins.
We see many distant, different, different, different.
But it shows, it shows you that what's skin difference can make, because the floor plan is essentially identical, but just with a different treatment.
You've met their needs? Are there plumps?
I guess one question is you were trying to balance, what do you preserve of the original, aside from the look of it? You mentioned site, like you mentioned uh much light and other things coming in. Was that among other things, kind of considerations you're trying to manage for inside the building while still having, while, while shifting the external to be more traditional looking? Um, or what other things were you trying to protect or preserve?
I would say the, the, the goal is that the interior functions and the layout and the feel of a classroom are gonna be consistent from building to building. This is literally an exterior impression. Okay, thank you. Um, next up, um, do I still have time to go a few moments? Okay, sure. I think it's up to you then. Yeah. So next up, I would say, uh. Wanted to brief the board on neighborhood workshop one for Vermont. And this was our pre-bond. Site plan sketch for Vermont. So this is the existing building configuration. Reminds you that the playground on the right side, the ball field is on the left side. Actually, the playground dips down into uh this lower L shape. Out along the pipe. This is significantly lower in elevation than in school. This was our pre-bond sketch. There it is, the Vermont in the middle. We were, our instincts were to propose parking on the west side. Keeping playground on the east side, building generally in the same location but stacked two stories. And then the drop off along the street. So we shared this with the community. Uh, and the. The majority of the discussion with the community was around site circulation. Vermont as a one-way was a request, considering opening up Springfield Pike. To the site. Yeah. Site access here was requested. Uh, and then the big change was the request to flip the site. Uh, the playground felt better to the community in this location where it's more visible and like on the same elevation. Versus in this location, the playground was really, it's more hidden as it goes down the hill. That was the big uh request here was to flip it. So here's a flipped version. We essentially mirror it, hundred and eighty degrees. Playground is on the left. Um, this, this diagram compared to the previous one really acknowledges the garden, the greenhouse, the importance of that to the school. And then the new two-story school bike parking and then having staff parking and service then on the east. We did speak to the city about coming and connecting to Springfield Pike. Uh, they were generally leaning against it. They said, if you had to make that Springfield pipe connection. Let's only use it for staff parking and service and not parent drop off. But they preferred that we keep the Vermont connection and not add another curb cut of the Springfield Pike. So our thought now is to have the parking and the service on the east side, and then maybe we preserve some green space there towards the bike. So uh, the floor plans are, are the same as we've been developing. We just, in these images now, you can see them for the first time mirrored.
Do you lose a lot of parking places now?
I don't think so. We, we need to lay it out. Our goal is to provide more than they have today.
Right.
We want to get parking off of Vermont as much as we can.
Exactly.
To help with the uh drop off and pickup.
Yeah, that was my question in the flip. I couldn't remember if that, if we lost places from. If the parking lot was where the playground.
And this is a, just kind of a conceptual diagram, it's not down to, that needs to keep coming down a little bit, it could. So this is our thought as this is going to develop is we're, we're gonna flip it. Uh, we've reviewed the flip of the city. The city's comfortable with the flip.
They weren't comfortable changing to a one-way. Right, Vermont, Missouri. A lot of the neighbors were just asking, they just said it gets so clustered. Um, they, it's really, it gets really tight. So it's been a hard one to try to figure out how you could make that a better flow for them. Um, so it was great, but like at least half, they had lovely, there was just so much lovely feedback at that session, I think, for Vermont. It was very teacher-student based. It was, it was lovely to hear them say like, I want to flip the playground because we love seeing the children play. And if you take that away, just they, they were very tuned into how the neighborhood works. And focused on um student experience and teacher experience. But I just thought it was, yeah. It was neat to hear it. And then a lot of the people had the same things to say, because there were enough people that we got to break up in the four groups, seven groups.
Yeah, how many people attended that one? That was, that seemed like a big kind of.
I think it was a good, pretty good. That one, I was not able to get up and count all the ones. But I, if, if, that felt more like maybe seventy, sixty, sixty-five, seventy.
It would be a little ceremony. Um, but I do like the flip and the. You said some really.
Fascinating, yes, today.
Yeah.
They've, they've been fascinating, the workshop structure has really worked well.
But you do great at listening to it and then pivot very quickly in the very.
Yeah, this is, uh, you know, we don't just pivot, just to pivot like this, and then for example, where. A lot of times, there are really good ideas that you're not really thinking.
That's right.
Um, and this idea of, basically what they're saying was the playground, this is our whole neighborhood playground, it's the only one we have. Uh, they like the visibility in the ball field, and they're like, let's make sure we get this safe and we can see our kids. Uh, and that makes sense versus having all the way down the hill where they're not visible.
Right, well, and they're also saying like they, you don't, it's not accessible. And when it rains, they couldn't use half of that um playground anyway for drainage and for drainage issues. So it just makes sense. You're right, but enough people said it, and you're like, oh. Hey.
Yeah.
So it was good. I'm excited to see what it's gonna be.
And I'm trying to remember, I don't think we're able to extend the drop off pickup any. I think that is what it is currently, right?
It is what it is currently. We could consider uh extending it. We need to look into location of light poles. And then just the trade-off between the cost of relocating. A light pole and whether that's worth it.
Right. And I wonder if that's why they stopped short, not short, but a lot of the neighbors were saying, why didn't they increase that when they did the street?
Start moving light poles and.
So that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Once the city retit out.
So any other questions you have for me, any, anything at all on? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
We need to crack loud versus work small.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our, uh, committee reports. And I believe there is one for Vic. Well, thank you for sending that very comprehensive, uh, uh, I think it was two Friday hundreds ago of the purpose, the plan, the agendas, the meeting dates for Vic.
And, and Erica has established that, that's on a really great rhythm to, to continue to share that information out. We actually had to move our meeting that was scheduled earlier in November. And so the next meeting is going to be on December 2nd. So it'll be, as we were saying, it's very, uh, on spring break. We're not at spring break.
Oh, right.
We are not at spring break.
Okay. And, uh, citizens advisory, Matt? Data's on that one?
Into your progress, uh, with the groups. I think both, well, we're, um, involved in some negotiation stuff. So, um, Suzie gave update around things happening primarily with some of the, uh, primary facilities plans and, uh, you're getting into the discussion. So I think folks are on track and making some good progress relative to the sharing houses we
Okay. And district leadership team is not, has not met yet or since our last meeting. So you will skip that and go on to facilities committee. Is there additional information from what we've just heard you'd like to add in?
Well, the groundbreaking was just today.
It was indeed.
And that was very fun. I feel like we kind of knew going in that it was, um, obviously the building had already been taken down. You're not fully digging. So you just don't know. Are five people showing up or is it, not that the community is not interested, but you just never know who can make it. But I think there was a great turnout and
Hundred twenty-four.
Hundred twenty-four. Yeah, the little, like to see the kids in the little, those hats and the, um, vests that we were giving out to the kids. They wanted to be there and for them to have the opportunity to dig. That was great.
The picture of them in the vest digging was so
Okay, everybody. That was great.
I like that.
Yeah. So anyway, I would say that's the big one. We're just trying to recognize each, with each one, right? A little recognition that each school is breaking ground at some point.
Setting that up. Suzie really worked hard to
I mean, the blue and white smoke going off in the distance. How in distance?
That was it. I turned around and the smoke was like half gone. I'm like, oh.
Fine line. You don't want it to go on the titties or on the houses around.
Right. Yes, but that point made it so wonderful. It was like right where the building is going to be. It's like soon as the smoke clears, you're going to see a building. Well, and I'm like It's gonna be a year.
Yeah.
Well, but like
We were talking as a committee of just like, how can you acknowledge each one? And obviously, um, Hilltop was already taken down. So how it might look a little different for Vermont and Elm might be a combination of, who knows? It, they could be a little different, but still celebrate for it.
That's wonderful. All right. Thank you. Um, the policy review committee, uh, remember we have some policies sitting out there. They'll show up in December. So I'm gonna keep moving on that. They are in their uh, review state. Uh, primary facilities report. Would you like to do a financial committee update?
Oh, absolutely. Sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, finance committee did meet earlier this evening and we have a few standing agenda items. So we reviewed the salary and benefit analytic. And we also took a deep dive into the October income tax payments, both in total and in in the categories which we received our payment and trying to make heads or tails of that. Moderately successful, maybe. But we look at that every time that we have an income tax payment. We then looked at the four pieces of legislation that were recently passed by the general assembly. They're on their way. Well, they're, they're not on their way. They are at the governor's desk. And all four of these are just continue to attack local revenue, local voted property tax revenue for public schools. Uh, 309 is the most concerning for us. 309 is, is the, the bill that the bill where the county budget commission can reduce any voter approved levy except bond issues. So bond issues go over here and that's a good thing. If the revenue is deemed unnecessary or excessive by the county budget commission. So they're allowed to look at your tax budget and then make a determination on whether or not that you deserve all the tax revenue that has been, has been approved by your voters. And then, um, three others that aren't terribly impactful for us, devastating to some of our neighbors and public education across the states. 335 caps revenue growth from Inset Village aligned with, um, the GDP deflator or the inflationary cap. 186 caps property tax for a third district at the 20th floor. And 129 includes emergency and substitute levies in the 20th floor calculation effective 1126. So the three don't impact us because we're not at the 20th floor. But again, they are devastating for public education and some of our, uh, local Hamilton county partners who are at the floor. So um, already some veto requests. Again, the governor hasn't, hasn't signed these yet. So they are awaiting his signature, but already some veto requests um, are, uh, are, are on their way. And also some, some conversation about the constitutionality of some of these provisions. So, um, none of, none of those are great. In fact, they're all really bad. So I'm sure more to come when the general assembly returns in spring.
So if you wanted any of us to call the, um, governor's office and suggest vetoes of all four, you'd be okay with that?
Or just not signing. Don't sign them.
Right. Yeah. Don't sign them. Okay.
However, that comes. So the budget bill is different. Uh, that's a good question. The budget bill was different when we were asking for the veto because we needed him to sign the budget bill and then veto those particular line items. These are standalone pieces of legislation. So, um, we want him to not sign those pieces of legislation. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's a little different request.
And I read somewhere, um, that since he's on his way out, he might be more inclined to be beyond politics and the reason for not devastating our public schools.
Versions of these were all things that he vetoed.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
He vetoed the ones. A little bit, like they weren't exactly the same, but they were similar versions of this legislation. So.
Even before he was on the way out.
Well, no, he, he's in June. Or yeah, this June.
May.
Yeah, they were part of the
Still with the vision that he wasn't going to go for reelection.
Right.
On the veto, you, you wanted to not sign it because if you veto it, it could be overridden.
I, so, so we needed him to sign the, the biennial budget bill. And so he has a line item veto power. And so he struck these provisions when they were lumped into the budget because we, we had to have the budget bill. These are standalone pieces of legislation. Um, it doesn't make any sense to sign it and then veto it.
Well, I
It's one thing.
I didn't know if you could just veto it and say no versus just not sign.
I honestly don't know the answer to that. It's a really good question.
Veto sounds more like a smackback.
Yeah. So what we want is none of these to pass.
However, that, however, he needs to move his pen around to make that happen.
Come back again.
Yeah. Yes. And yeah.
He hasn't signed it. Can it come back again?
Right. That's a great.
Uh, those are all, uh, legal questions.
If he doesn't sign it.
He can be tool it and bring it back. It's in a due bill. That's what they did here essentially at the Rito.
True.
So
I also, I think, because I'm probably wrong. I, I feel like there's a, like a period, like if he doesn't sign it within 10 days, then something happens. Is it just so it just disappears? I feel like there's a 10-day thing. So a little government classwork to do in order to happen. But the, the
Mike, go, go.
Bottom line is these are, these are bad for public education, um, and a couple of them are, are also bad for us.
All right. Thank you.
And then we, um, we also did a, a primary facilities financial update. So we've been doing, um, a lot of facility work in primary facilities. And so we wanted to extend that work on the finance side to just, to just make sure that we were keeping an eye on, uh, primary facilities from a finance perspective. And so that work, um, facility, facility side is happening and facility committee, finance side happening.
And we're going to do that regularly.
We are.
As a financing thing.
That's going to be part of our regular rhythm.
Keep going on the primary facilities report because it's, it would.
Thank you. So the primary facilities report, item A is a resolution authorizing and increasing the contract sub with Mobile Modular Management Corporation. So when we first, um, did this, the company was E-MOD and they've since been purchased by Mobile Modular. And so this is, um, a small change order. When we, um, when we actually worked, worked through and got all the mods all installed, there was, um, some additional subcontractor work related to utilities. Utilities are a little bit of a wild card and the utility situation at Friendship was more complex than we originally thought. And so where there were some additional costs added into that. And so those costs have been reviewed by HGC. And then also we ran them through our legal team to make sure that all of that was balanced. So that's why it's coming to a little bit late. I mean, obviously we've been in the mods and been at the church since school started, but it went through extensive review to make sure that that change order was warranted. And then item B is approval of the builder's risk insurance policy for Hilltop. Uh, and so, you know, we have our general liability coverage that you all approve once a year. And so this is specific builder's risk policy. Now that, uh, so the site demolition was covered under our regular insurance, but now that we are, um, now that we've turned the dirt and we're, we're building, uh, we need to move on to the builder's risk. So lining up actually what that means.
When you talk about, um, running it past our, our, um, legal counsel, at that point, are we using the legal counsel we use for building the?
Yeah, it's a brick record. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the primary facilities report? So move. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Jean.
Yes.
This is Daller.
Yes.
This is Brager.
Yeah.
Mr. Feldmeyer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Board of Education report. Oh, I guess I should do that. Um, the, we have, as you well know, Toria Wall has served us well for two, three-year terms and chose to not continue her term. And I have been at this for a while trying to find, um, someone who would take that position. I did, I, I did reach out to someone and, uh, they declined. So, um, wondering what in the world we were going to do. Suddenly got a call from Deborah Alsop who said she would like to take that decision. So Deborah has served on the Wyoming board for a number of years and, and in fact, I have her seat. Um, she has also been on the Hamilton ESC, uh, board for a while and later person who was connected to Great Oaks. So Great Oaks is, um, a great friend of hers. She certainly knows everything there is to know about it, I do believe, and, uh, was eager to become the Wyoming representative. So that's what this is about. We have to do an official resolution because then Great Oaks will, um, bring her on for a three-year term. And if her term would begin in January through three years as, um, our representative to, uh, the Great Oaks. She, uh, I've already talked to her about she would be glad to come speak with us whenever we would like. She would be glad to do monthly reports whenever the the board feels is the best way for them to stay, um, informed with Great Oaks. Then the second one is, um, revolving around Luanne Blancher, who, um, as you know, was one of the candidates for, um, the board of education this, this last election. And, um, in hoping that she would stay strongly involved. And, um, she had an inclination towards the, uh, BIC. And, um, so if we accept her tonight because of the negotiations meeting that got moved to December, she will have only actually missed one meeting. So I, I bring that to your attention because I know we've, we've done this in the summer. We set up the committees. Everything was set and ready to go. But in this particular case, she will, would not be terribly far behind. And she would be able to go to the moved November meeting and attend the December meeting. So is there anything else anybody would like to say? I mean, we've had a chance to talk to
Excited about both of them and being connected to, to the district.
All right. So on that note, and that would be by the way, a two-year term. Um, that would begin this school year and next school year. Um, although I think with some of the BIC members, they stay beyond the two-year term. So it's not like CAC where we really do keep evolving.
Right.
People in that now. All right. So if that's okay with everyone, may I have a motion to approve the board of education report?
So move.
And I will be glad to second. And if you would give us a roll call.
Mr. Jean.
Yes.
This is Daller.
Yes.
This is Brager.
Yeah.
Mr. Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Treasures report.
Thanks, Jeanie. Item A, approval of the minutes from the October 27th regular meeting and then November 19th planning meeting. Item B, approve the statement of revenue and expenditures for month ending October 31st. Item C, accept with appreciation this incredible list of donations, including a $1.4 million donation. Oh, I wish that was cash, but it is. Uh, as, uh, from News Bank. So this is, um, a 25-year license to the products that News Bank offers. And then, uh, a couple of other wonderful donations from the foundation. Item D, the November appropriation adjustments. And item E, approval of the report, please.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
And may I have a roll call?
This is Daller.
Yes.
This is Brager.
Yeah.
Mr. Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Jean.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did this news bank come through the Wyoming School Foundation?
Yeah.
So they will do the banking for us? Or is that something that is for us to do?
We could do that too.
Yeah.
Very solid.
All right. If anyone would like to be a part of that, feel free to, a minute. All right. So for tenants' report.
Hey, thank you. I have several, uh, personnel recommendations. Number one is to rescind a classified staff position. Number two, it's a recommendation to approve, um, student auditorium workers and volunteers. Number three is recommendation to approve an athletic volunteer. Number four is a new job description. This is a registered behavior technician, um, RBT. Sometimes that is referred to. Um, just a, a little bit about this position. Um, excited about this, this position, which is new. Uh, it does reflect feedback that we've received from our intervention in special education audit and is a, it's an added role to support, um, to provide additional support to both students, um, um, and, and staff, but really students with, um, with specialized needs. So excited about looking at supporting students in different ways. And then number five is a recommendation to approve a van driver. And then item B is a camp proposal. This is Wyoming baseball camp. Um, and I believe this is for students who are in, through eighth grade. It's on Saturdays on those dates, February 7th through the 41st. And then item C is a Hamilton County Educational, Education Service Center Agreement for Speech and Language Pathologist Services, again, to support students who have that need.
All right. Thank you. No questions? May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Roll call, please. This is Brager.
Yes.
Mr. Feldmeyer.
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
This is Jean.
Yes.
This is Daller.
Yes.
And then it's update?
Or can we, can we flip flop the discussion on the calendar?
Sure.
Which order does do that? So why don't you take the calendar and, and pass that around? I just thought it'd be, it, it would make sense to talk about the, the revised 26, 27, um, calendar first.
Oh, that's fun.
That's why I was still looking at it.
Right.
Yeah, I think I have mine from last time. You just you got you.
So yeah, this calendar is, it's the same calendar that we, um, we shared as a first read during these planning meetings.
Yeah.
Uh, it needs to, to be posted for additional time before it can get to its second read. But again, I just wanted to just talk through this calendar one more time, just to, to make sure everyone understood, uh, the changes that are being suggested. And again, this, um, this is, um, a, a change that's being presented because of the primary facilities timeline change. And so that shifted the completion of Hilltop from the winter break of the 26, 27 school year to the summer of 27. And so with the original time, timeline, we needed a longer winter break to facilitate the movement of students and staff um, out of Friendship United Methodist Church into the new Hilltop and then out of Vermont into Friendship Church. And so we no longer need that three, three-week winter break. We revised that calendar. And this is that, that calendar that is, um, that's being recommended. And so if you look at that revised calendar, there really is only a, a change to the start of the school year and the week that students and staff come back from winter break. In the original calendar, the start of the school year for staff began on August 6th and 7th with two professional development days. And students began on August 10th, very early. And then really we were trying to push, push out the, the, the timeframes of the calendar to wedge in another week of winter break. Again, no longer need that. On the original calendar, the winter break went from December 19th through January 10th for students. And staff came back for two professional development days on January 7th and 8th. So with the change, which is the calendar that you're looking at right now, the start of the school year has been moved later three days to begin on August 11th and 12th for staff with two professional development days and then August 13th for students, which is more of a typical start time for our staff and our students. And the winter break is back to a typical And the winter break is back to a typical two-week winter break. And then we'll go from December nineteenth through January fourth. Uh, and the return to school on January fifth for students. Staff will return on Monday, January fourth for one professional development day. And again, we've shared this before, just thought it was important to bring it back to this conversation again. Uh, and soon after we get back from Thanksgiving break, um, we'll make sure that we put this in our superintendent update. Make sure that all, all families have access to that and they see the rationale and they see the printed calendar. And then so it will be back on as a recommendation or a second read for the December date.
Oh, right. And then we officially.
Yep.
December, yeah.
Yes. Uh, but we've had the conversation with PAC teams. We'll continue to share it with PAC teams December as we come back to the table to.
I'd imagine they like it. I mean, like we said before, the starting not on a Monday is great. Starting a little bit later is great. You're still finished in May. Still have some nice perks and then, uh, staff gets a break actually over the holiday instead of moving everything.
Right.
So.
Right. Yeah. And so again, the, one of the benefits to this is that the timeline changes that all the movement now happens in the summer for all three buildings. And it's, it's tough though, you know, it's tough to look at a, a change when people were, were excited about, you know, the unique position that maybe they were in based on what grade you're in or where you were in school. But, uh, but we'll do our best to support them.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks too. Yep. And then superintendent update, I, you know, Thanksgiving right around the corner. So much to be excited about, so much to be thankful for. You know, today was a perfect example of, of that as we did the, uh, the groundbreaking ceremony. You know, to have our community member, our staff member there, students performing, students, you know, digging in with their construction hats is just, just phenomenal, phenomenal. And so, uh, it was just a really good example of the special place, um, that our school community is. And really that's all I could think about as I, as I ended the, you know, the, my thoughts on, on this meeting. That was a perfect way to go into Thanksgiving break. And so we hope our, our students and our staff, everyone enjoys, enjoys the break, a much needed break. We will be sending communications out tomorrow. A test of our texting, uh, protocol will go tomorrow afternoon and a test of our phone call system. Uh, which is, the, both of those are used in case of emergency.
Yeah.
And sometimes in the case of a, a snow day. It was really hard to say. I was gonna say inclement weather, but weather, but our students don't want me to say that. They want.
No, say, just say snow day.
I don't see that in the forecast though. What if?
No, tomorrow.
Not tomorrow. No. So anyway, so thank you to everyone who, uh, again, who helped to celebrate today. It was, uh, it was a really cool experience.
It was great.
Yep.
We wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Um, unless someone has something, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call. Mr. Bellmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Jean.
Yes.
This is Dollar.
Yes.
This is Brager.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Under enough.